Visiting Beautiful Park County stopped by the Vintage Beehive at their new location. One fifteen East High Street, Rockville, Indiana. We have antiques, vintage items, homemade, handmade, and handcrafted.
I'm in no place to go, sad stuff. Well, let's do the pledge, guys. I pledge allegiance to Susan Plaack of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this ought to be short and sweet. Dan won't be here, he's at work, he couldn't make it back. But we knew that was a possibility last time you said my name. So we will not approve the minutes because Bruce will not be here for that meeting, and I wouldn't have a second to approve him, so we'll let that wait till next time. We have payroll amount of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. That's kind of normalized.
That's normal. You don't probably grow up here with festival, but I'd make a motion we approve payroll. Hundred eighty-eight thousand twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight?
Not a second, that all favor say aye. Okay. Okay, thank you. And we need to acknowledge receipt of the payroll claim in the payroll report. The amount of fifty-four thousand one eighty-seven ninety-nine.
I'll make a motion, we approve the payroll accounts payable report fifty-four thousand one eighty-seven ninety-nine.
Not a second, all favor say aye. Aye, okay. Okay. All right, then we have accounts payable claims in amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand one twenty-eight thirty-two cents. That's a big one. I suspect it's really, really much.
I'm sure there's weird stuff in there. It's like, uh, out of Cube Bridge, a hundred and nine thousand paid out to civil law. And I'm sure it was asked for or by two of us or some kind of stuff. I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable claims in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents.
No, I would second that, all favor say aye. Aye, okay.
Hi there.
Hi.
Why don't you come on up, we won't keep you around, you're along with your business. What you got? This is our Title VI report.
Yeah.
We need to do this to keep in good graces with the state so we can continue to get grants. So those are primarily a Department of Transportation thing. In any case, the annual report that we're required to provide them, I believe you guys have a copy. There's nothing significant in it. We're going to keep on doing what we've been doing, we've had no reports. And so that was for two thousand twenty. We'll do two thousand twenty-one in January.
Okay.
So you'll see me, you'll hear about this in a couple of months. Then annually, we'll just do it every January, we'll do the accomplishments and goals. We'll sign this and send it off to the state.
Okay. We received a notice from them that we were deficient, we didn't know why we were deficient, and the adjustment report hadn't been done, so that's what this is going to fulfill. This is what we need to be, this is not the ADA compliance, that's through Randy, he's the ADA officer.
If I could just get you to sign that, and I will send that off to the.
Then I make the motion that we approve the Title VI reporting given by the Emergency Management Director.
I'll say.
All favor say aye. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Nothing else you need from us for festival time coming up?
Okay.
I'll lay the top and do it there.
All right. The two thousand twenty goals and accomplishments in Title VI, we got that taken care of. Travelers' claims, we have a couple there that have been directed on.
She didn't do her TMI report.
I'm sorry?
The TMI report she didn't get like a number.
Okay. So those travelers things are just one form, those are the ongoing claims that have been filed. All right, we got TMI report, what kind of numbers you got?
Um, as of September thirtieth, we had seven hundred and ninety-five.
Okay. And there'll be more coming, I'm sure, once they get here.
Yep, we could get some all week.
Yeah, and there's the EMS report from Emergency Management Director. The collections dropped about forty thousand, so that's good.
New collection agencies doing a pretty good job.
Yep, yep, I think so. And it looks like testing site numbers beginning to drop, so hope we're past the peak on how she says. And we've decreased from an average of a hundred and five weekly tests to forty weekly tests, that's good. And I think that's pretty much mirroring the nation numbers as well. Dr. Fauci, love him or hate him, whatever he's with, but he's up with feeling that we have passed the peak anyway. And so we're turning down on everything now, so we'll see how that goes. I had a couple of things here. I know there are highway departments out to patch in nine hundred today, and I asked if they will go do the road down to Fallen Rock, and they said they would take care of that. That's about it. Did we mention you last time, or did you work on it? We were going to adopt an ordinance about making changes to the bridges.
Yeah.
We don't have to have it today, I just wondered if you'd have a chance.
Yeah, I've been working on it, it's pretty well done, but there might be a couple of questions I have for you.
Okay, and that'd be good, we have a good idea. Mike Rowe down at Bridge to Mill will like to put us something, kind of a metal sign on the inside, explaining the process we went through when the bridge was done, but it's just a matter of getting the wording where we all agree on that.
So I guess the only question I really had is what type of penalty did you guys have in mind, monetary penalty wise?
Got suggestions on other types ordinance of that type that you should do?
Usually, you know, I'm thinking like a hundred dollars, and there's five hundred, and there's twenty-five hundred, and there's five. I mean, there's different levels we could do, but I'd say probably the minimum level initially.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, that's kind of up to you guys. It's more so to be a civil penalty than it is to be a punitive. Because if it's punitive, it's some criminal action, then we'd be looking at a crime and restitution. So it's more so just somebody doing it where they didn't cause harm, but they didn't have permission.
Right. I'm thinking more along the graffiti lines, a lot more thinking along that.
That'd be more of a criminal action then.
And we already have things in place for that?
Well, state law, so criminal mischief or different things like that. So this would be more so some type of entity or organization, or maybe a neighbor or something, put something up on.
All I really cared about is getting the word out somehow, and that minimum fine's fine with me.
All right.
We've had good people come to me and offer that they were going to go paint inside the bridge over the graffiti and stuff. I said, well, I appreciate that, but we need to coordinate that so we have the right color paint going and doing it the right way.
This civilly, this would be a civil thing to govern that, meaning if they go out and paint inside a bridge without permission, they may not have had that criminal intent, but.
And they wouldn't have, they're just trying to do a good thing, but then you just can't let anybody go do that kind of thing. Because then they're going to paint over that because they didn't like that painting.
So that's why I suggest maybe the minimum.
That's fine, I mean, Bruce, do you think that's okay? And if it's not, we can always adjust.
First offense, I guess, is what I mean.
Yeah, we can always adjust that.
Yeah.
So that would work.
That was the only thing I really needed.
We just need to get however we can and get that word out that we're appreciative of people who want to help do that stuff. But we just got to coordinate it all. I know the group of young people that went and did the graffiti, they, at first, they were surprised that they needed to go through west permission to do that. But, I mean, somebody's got to make that same, somebody's got to say that.
County property.
It is, that's the sad part.
Well, it's like the gentleman that wanted to volunteer to take the weeds down by the bridge.
Right.
Down, I can't remember.
Roseville, yeah. Yeah.
It's still county property and, you know.
Yeah, and if you get hurt now, now, I mean, you're out doing a good thing, but now you get hurt and.
Well, your trespass.
And yeah, so it's tough call. I appreciate all the help we get on everything, but we just have to have a manner of doing it, I guess.
So I should have that ready at the next meeting, and that's all I really needed to input into it.
I think that's really all I had on the business. Bruce, you got anything?
I have anything.
Okay. I did go paint over graffiti at Cox Ford. It was pretty much, I got some pictures all the way through, somebody happy with the reddish paint, spray can paint and all kinds of stuff, all over the thing. So I went down, I painted that the other day. And he said from PCI, they were going to do it and ask us about the paint that we use now to do those, but it's not obnoxious paint, blends in pretty well, really. But they're too busy, I said, don't worry about it, I'll take care of it, and I got that taken care of, so that's covered. Never want to post those things about doing that because somebody will want to get out between that and the bridge festival coming along, get more stuff painted on it, so we'll see how that goes. Do you have any of your business? Nope, neither, so, sure.
Barely made it in here, didn't it?
You did, yeah. I got a message today from Matt Steckley. Remember who Matt Steckley is, the guy who's inspected the facilities, the courthouse, and he has a plan out to monitor those inspections and stuff? And he was saying he's not really looking to get anybody in trouble, that wasn't his intent at all, he made that very plain. Let me see this here in the middle. He just said that, he just didn't want to be a problem, but he just had noticed that when he logged on to check the digital platform that hadn't been any inspection on that for the last two months, because when he logged on, there'd been no other log ones before that. So I don't know if you have anything with John on that, or if you need Matt to come out and show them how to do that, or?
I can mention it to him.
Okay.
I want a word to that, but.
Yeah, that's, I'll show this to you after, after meeting, I don't need to read it to you now, but I'll show you what it is. Do you have Matt's number, if you ever have questions on that one, if that works out for you to, whatever, whatever works. We're just trying to find the best way to keep that stuff up, as I can. Okay, what else you got?
Seventy-two in jail, twelve of them are DOC. I don't have the figures, they've got busy at the jail, so he didn't have time to do his report, but we had our night out last Wednesday.
How was it?
It worked good.
Good.
Probably a little less than attendance than what we've had in years past, but it was still, still a real busy night, so.
Good.
No incidents, but yeah, I think glad it turned out.
Good.
Good weather, so.
Well, I think there's some football games going on that day.
Yeah, we had a lot of school activity at night, so.
Kids couldn't get there because of that. Still, Justin did, and his staff did a great job, but I think everybody enjoys that little.
Yeah, we had a lot of positive feedbacks.
Good, that was Wednesday, right?
Yes, for this town.
Yeah, and we had a rain day that got postponed from late before, so.
Yeah, we drove by, we were putting the stand up all, just about all day that day, and I said, I remember seeing that, wondering how that went.
I don't know, we're kind of thinking maybe next year, maybe do it in conjunction with the fair possibly. Just to kind of add to it, but it would help us out too.
Be a good addition to the fair, so they don't have a carnival anymore, unless they have a carnival coming next year, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I just briefly mentioned it to one of them, so that may be a possibility, so.
Good thinking.
That's all I have.
Well, that was pretty quick, that went hard, what did you trip up here? Twelve DOC though, is that up?
It, we'd normally run around that, around ten, twelve, somewhere. That's kind of average still, so.
No more from anybody else, like Fountain County or anybody, we don't get any, or Vigo County, do we have any of theirs at all?
Since the, well, since COVID hit, we kind of cut that out, and we finally had our case.
Oh, you did, okay.
Of it, so that kind of.
Okay.
But put the numbers where they are, plus Vermont County's got their shipped out now. They had talked to us, and I think we'd agreed to take ten or eleven or something, somewhere around that number, but you just, I don't know what we were expecting them, and they just never came, but I think they've got them farmed out in six counties and.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
If we ever get better, then we'd probably start taking some again.
Okay. It's got to end Sunday, surely, so.
Oh, yeah, I hope.
Yeah, we'll see. All right, I appreciate you.
All ready for the weekend?
I am, we'll see, I think it's going to be busy, but.
It is going to be busy, yeah. Hope you're not busy all day.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll have good weather for ten days, so.
I'm ready. Go fly, I was working there all weekend, boy, we got rained on there, I mean, it was big rain a couple of times.
Did they have a good turnout?
It was okay, it wasn't great, parking lot that where they all park coming in, it was just a mud hole. They pulled everybody out Sunday, and it was just, it was a mud hole. But for most part, they ran most time, they had to ask guys to just take it easy, go uphill a couple of times when it rained, but Saturday rained just about all day. Sunday, it kind of come and go, and some would come out and then it would pour for a while, and the sun come pour for a while. But it was good, it's good, good program. All righty, Randy. Thanks for getting that road today.
Yeah, they got it finished.
Good.
How you guys doing today?
Good, how about you?
All right. Here's, uh, one of the dependents, Pickers.
Thanks, sir. Are you fully staffed now?
Uh, no, I think I'm down two.
Okay.
Supposed to be down one, but the one guy, Hardy, didn't show up, and he called right away, so.
You mean you hired him, and he just never showed up for the first day?
Never showed up.
I hear that from so many people.
I had one set up for an interview, I called personally, set the interview, and then they didn't show up.
Isn't that amazing?
Yeah.
He showed up to interview, but then just didn't show up to work.
Well, he didn't mean for you to hire him. We're supposed to offer me a job.
Maybe he just needed that to get his unemployment, because you still have to have a.
I think they reinstated that recently. They weren't doing that because of COVID.
Yeah.
I think they are in Indiana again.
So at least got to show an attempt to.
I couldn't, but I thought I heard that. So maybe that's what mine was too.
Probably.
Didn't really want to tell them, didn't really want to work.
Or they asked somebody about you one together?
Yeah, they were. I did give them your name and number.
Oh, good, thanks, yeah, I appreciate it.
Personal cell phone.
Yeah.
We've done all the bridge routes patched, and we're running on some other roads too. Lines were marked, we done those the other day.
Yeah, we, let's talk about that for a minute, because Bruce, Bruce Stew thought maybe we had talked about that. The confusion was, Randy thought that we had decided we weren't going to mark the blue lines because they get violated all the time anyway. Either Dan or I remember saying that we weren't, didn't want to mark, it was just that we were going to work on that. In fact, Dan just suggested maybe we should do it with permanent paint, that would do every three or four years instead of having to do it every year, because it's a pain for them to do it. And of course, people in the ordinance push the line all the time, but I said I needed to speak with you on that, so this would be my attempt at that. But I think if we didn't have at least a baseline there, then if they pushed out too far and had an accident, they could blame us because we didn't mark where the lines were, and they didn't know how far out they could go or couldn't go. So it made sense to me to at least have a baseline, whether they obey it or not, who knows? But at least we have the baseline down where we can say, no, it's already marked.
I mean, I guess from my perspective, it doesn't hurt to have that, it's not going to preclude them from naming the county.
Oh, I understand that, but at least we have something to say, well, we made the attempt to get around.
Right, and that would be helpful, and then it'd be helpful to have pictures of that too, you know, that we've done this and.
And it takes a day, at least a day, his crew's time, Richard's time to go do that, so he spent that time. The confusion this time was, and Randy was upset because we needed to have it done because couldn't wait until Tuesday or Wednesday, this week, because people will be coming in now, so.
I got mixed up one more week.
Oh, is that what it was? Ah, okay.
So generally, what happens is, you know, is that when somebody gets hurt, they look for the biggest person.
Oh, absolutely, name anybody.
Everybody, everybody's.
We had that, we had that one lawsuit came through, was everybody in the universal, whatever, it was listed on that, yeah.
Right.
Oh, well, okay, well.
I've got a suggestion.
Uh huh.
Why don't we work toward, we're supposed to put some money back each year toward the ADA? Why don't we work toward, uh, putting sidewalks in a little bit of time, Mansfield and Bush.
It'd be fine.
Put them back, backside of the sidewalk, because you got two ordinance, if you got one ten-foot setback, or if it's a sidewalk, goes behind the sidewalk. And that would be a permanent marker, but.
Sounds right to me now, is that something you'd be interested in putting sidewalks in, or you want us to hire that up? Okay, correct. I think that's, that'd be great for both locations, if we even have that, so I'm fine with that.
Be good for us, and be good for the town, and be good for the people.
I think that's a good idea. It's early mark, you can't get across the sidewalk, you've got good sidewalks to walk on, so I think that's a good idea. How much money do you typically have that you, the ADA to put back? How much would there be?
Well, I think we just said in our policy, we put around twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. I think we could find some money to do sidewalks, even if it took three, four years to get it done.
You wouldn't get them all at once.
You just start to get a plan in place and start working on that plan, yeah. I think that's a good idea, I like that. I think both Bridget and Mansfield would appreciate that effort to do that. And the other ones that are already developed towns that have them, like Monazuma and Roseville and Stuffing, and they can't complain because we're putting, it's on our county property, it's not town property, that's town property, this is county property. Yeah, we're doing it on our property, so they shouldn't be able to complain about that, so it's a good idea. Let's, let's work toward that and see some kind of plan, and we'll have, we'll have to do bids, of course, I don't know how many people can do that kind of stuff, but we just need to do some requests for proposals and see what kind of money we're talking about, and then see how much we'd fund every year, and how long it might take to do it.
I don't know George Cobb's boy, still does that work.
He doesn't do concrete anymore, he tries to avoid it anyway, so.
Well, I mean, that's simple, you know, that's.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
For buildings.
Yeah. But we can certainly talk to him, but there are a couple of others that have come up.
There might be some Alleys that.
There probably would be, yeah.
They'll probably be the cheapest.
Probably.
My brother does concrete, but he won't be cheaper than the Alleys.
And we don't always necessarily have to go cheaper, but we'd have to have a reason not to. Typically, the reason not to is you already had experience with these people, and they've done good stuff. But this case, we probably wouldn't have, unless you've had concrete, worked with somebody before that does that stuff, neither, so. We would probably have to go with the cheapest, unless there was a reason not to go with the cheapest, so. But let's work on that, maybe we can have something ready for some proposals to go out this winter, and maybe they can get at it in springtime. Start going, I think the homeowners. Now, will we, are we going to get involved with private property? Does our right of way go right to the edge of the road, or how long do we have off the edge of the road tar?
Mill Street is a narrow street in Mansfield. Rest of them are forty, forty-five.
Okay, so we'll have plenty of room on our right of way to do that next to the road, okay, be great.
And that, that, you'll take care of the ten-foot setback.
Yeah, I would, yeah. Sounds good.
Of course, the places we don't have the right of way, like Clark Street, and probably that Mill Road, Clark Street, Bridget. Because the road runs off to the edge of the right of way, you know, it's not in the center.
Gotcha.
It's not always that way.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So.
People ask.
Do something a little different, but still, you could use the other side of the sidewalk, the road for the sidewalk to measure from.
And the landlord might be perfectly happy with having that in his front yard.
Well, that could be.
It's easier for them to, I suppose with the county, I know in town, correct me if I'm wrong, you're the town attorney, but if, if the homeowner's still responsible for the sidewalk in front of his house, if it goes bad with roots and stuff, he's responsible.
Generally, in the town, yes, but I don't know that that's the case of the county.
I would say the county would probably be our responsibility, I maintain.
I'd have to look, but.
And, and I'd be better with that anyway, because we know it would get fixed if it got bad, you got roots coming through it or whatever, and we could fix that then, we could hire that.
I would tell you that town usually will take the position that they'll put it in or rent it or fix it or things like that, if the land.
Still your responsibility, but we're going to do it, but we're just going to do it your favor, and I understand that.
But.
They pay taxes out to the middle of roads, is that the way it works in towns?
I don't know.
I think they are, I think they tax that property, even though it's not there, so I think that's how.
I'm not certain on the tax part of it.
Well, it sounds good, good idea.
Oh, we about got the bridge put together up on Nysville Road.
Good.
And hopefully, I don't think that's going to affect the cover bridge at all, so I think we'll get our excavator this week. We'll probably close it Tuesday, next Tuesday, and go ahead and start tearing it out.
When would you be, have it back open again?
Well, I don't know if you're out, how the structure's going to come out.
Okay.
We got an excavator.
I don't know where, where it is.
Right there at two fifty, where Bill Isaac's used to live.
I don't know where it is. Hazlet's where you come down the road, where?
It's on past that.
Round the curve?
Yeah, going around the curve and the next curve.
Next curve, okay, there's a house right there?
There's a, like a.
That the one you're talking about?
Yeah, Bill Isaac's, that house, and Junior Boosabar used to live, house on the hill.
So you think it's good to close that during bridge festival time?
I don't think it's going to hurt anything.
I don't know.
Before you get to Judson.
Before you get to Judson, yeah. Because there's no way to run around it though, is there, because there's no other, oh, there is?
Yeah, you can go up that hill.
Okay.
Back over to four hundred.
Okay, as long as we mark it, that'd be fine, as long as we mark it.
Come in three fifty north.
As long as we make markers, because they won't have a clue about any of that stuff, they're just driving somewhere. We've been places before where it gets in a detour, but.
Early, we just run it up Nysville Road, we'll have a sign out there in Nysville.
Okay, that'd work. Just, just, just understand that you're dealing with people who have no clue where this road goes, because we've been there lots of times ourselves. We've been stuck with the motorhome pulling, pulling a G P I S where we get someplace, no warning, and it's just closed. And we can't back up with that, we have to take it all, take it apart and get to unhook all we got, and try to find a place to turn motor, it's a real pain. So as long as you got it marked, I'll be good with that, it'll be fine.
No one have to turn around there, I'll be, go up the hill.
That'd be perfect.
Go back to the road.
That'd be perfect. You got any problem with doing that roof?
No, I don't worry about that, so I think there are alternatives that you.
Got it. Will that bridge stay ninety degrees then, or are you going to go an angle to it at all? Is it?
Yeah, it's going to be.
Little bit.
In the term yet, but it's going to be longer.
Okay.
Got to go get a semi.
Good, yes, yeah, it's a tough little bridge.
Yeah.
Who lives in that house right by it now? Have to go, go past it.
Have to go through it?
Uh huh.
I don't know who that is.
I don't know who it is.
Nice little place.
It's nice.
Okay.
They keep it nice.
They do keep it nice, yeah.
About Bill, Bill's the old man.
I don't know.
His boy, I think.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah, but there is no one.
If they're heading to Rockville, how much of additional run around for them will it be to have to go around the other way, much of it, much?
No, not a whole lot.
Couple miles, five miles, what's that?
So into Judson and up.
Yeah.
That way over to three fifty or.
Okay, because I never drive that way. Okay.
Yeah, three fifty would be their closest one.
Yeah. It's got to be done, so as long as you don't think it'll affect bridge festival traffic, otherwise I know we're going to hear that, well, that's stupid, you're tearing up a road during bridge festival, I mean, here's coming in.
Out there, it's a, it's a, it's a bridge festival.
Okay. All right, well, as long as they can get around anyway, as long as you've got a certainly marked, they can find a way around, I'm okay with that. So don't be much traffic, because there'll probably be some Nova shortcut from here to there, and they're going to go this way. It's a big deal for a lot of folks. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, Lucas Callum, he been asking for the Sim Smith cover bridge.
Oh, good.
Other one was, uh, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, his is nineteen-two.
Okay. And that's to do everything you would expect done, hauling off the old metal?
They move existing roof, replace between six and ten reactors as needed. All new skip sheeting and all new metal.
Okay.
Metal labor, don't say anything about hauling it away, but.
Now, skip sheeting, what will you be using for that?
I imagine like one to fours or something like that.
Okay. All right. Because that was a new term, I had not heard that, so you're talking about just.
It's not a full sheet of sheeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's another word for those, perna, something like that?
Perlings, isn't it?
Perlings, yes, so is that what I basically recall about it, okay. Because I wasn't sure what that cheating meant, cheating to me was just a solid, solid thing, but okay, Perlings, yeah, okay, that would make sense, all right. Well, then I make the motion that we go with the lowest bid there from Luke Callum to replace the roof on the Sim Smith Bridge.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay. Well, thanks for getting those two, two bids, appreciate it.
I'll be the old man, you're telling me to go ahead when it gets time.
All right. And we'll have funds again from C B C to help with that, and we'll have one next year too. So if you have anything in mind, repairs need to be made on other bridges for next year, let us know, we'll get that in the C B C budget to make sure we got that. So if you have anything in mind, repairs need to be made on other bridges for next year, let us know. We'll get that in the C B C budget to make sure we got that put away. Alrighty.
That's all I have. My two guys have something.
I don't. Anything, Bruce? Thanks, appreciate it.
Hey, have a good evening.
You too. Did you have something for us? Nope?
Sir, you want me to address that?
Yeah, if you want.
Um, so Josh is one of the county deputies. Um, there've been some issues with uh, his life insurance policy have been being taken out of his paycheck, but hadn't actually been qualified as a policy, so he's been billed for it, but not received the life insurance policy.
Oh, really?
I guess there's a couple of other deputies as well that have had that happen, so.
So withholding the funds, but the funds aren't buying a life policy?
Right, so he hasn't received his policy, but we withheld the funds from his check. So I, I told him that he really needed to come to the commissioner meeting.
Do things, we need to refund those funds and then we need to install the policies trying to get him.
Right, and uh, Cameron Martin was aware of it too. He said he was gonna go and talk with the auditor tomorrow, but he invited either of you guys to attend with him if you want to.
I know, I don't need them. It should be pretty clear. If money's been funded, it wasn't buying anything, that money needs to be refunded. Are you okay with that? You would see it?
Yeah, I mean, again, either they would have to backdate the insurance policy.
Right.
Which wouldn't, wouldn't make any sense to them.
From the date that he actually said withholding, or start the policy now and refund those.
Or start the policy now rather than refund, go ahead and pay that many times until they're, until they stop them withholding. Would you be okay with that?
Either way.
That would just-
The other problem was is my other supplemental insurance that is billed straight to the county, they haven't been taking enough out of my check to cover that policy.
I know that's been difficult before. We'll look and do, see where we are, see what we gotta do. Which, which policy is he now? Is it dental or vision or?
No, it was the um, colonial. I spoke with Josh in the auditor's office. He has it all squared away now to take the right amount out of my checks.
Alright, did they have to take more out of you to bring it up to date? That's okay now?
He said he didn't. He got it figured out with them to where he wouldn't have to take more out of my check.
There was another officer that we know of also was having the same issue or similar issue, but he'd been there quite a bit longer, it sounds like.
Okay.
But I'm not able to do anything, so I just-
Things, I know things do come up. I know it's complicated, I understand that. We had one that was uh, um, let me think how this worked. Oh, money was being paid for a policy that was not a kind of policy, that, that we shouldn't have been paying that, but we were paying that, so that was-
I, I, I know on ours that um, the county had been paying for it, but hadn't been taking out my wife's checks, so we reimbursed the county for the difference. So you did make some money off of us.
I don't mind that a bit. That's, that part's alright, I'm okay with that part.
Luckily, we were able to do that, but it had, the county had been paying for a policy, but not taking out the checks.
Sounds like we need to do a, a review of some kind, see where everybody is and where it's all done.
That's more so why I wanted you to be aware of this, that there are a couple of issues there.
You wanna talk to the auditor? You want me to talk to the auditor?
Doesn't matter to me.
You're more familiar with them. I don't, I don't mind either, so either way, whoever, which need to bring it to your attention and then do a review of each employee and make sure that they're having extra money taken out, that we know it's being used to pay for something, make sure those things match up.
Yeah, I can talk to her tomorrow if you want me to. I'll be in the courthouse anyway.
She won't be tomorrow. I think she's sick. She, she'll be a while.
Might be, but if, we have been going through the insurances.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We just started last week. We went through all the insurances and the, like the deductions and figuring out who was off and what was off.
Oh, good, okay.
And I think Josh is cutting a check tomorrow for the ones that were.
Okay, to bring him up to date then? How do we restate the ones who thought they were getting life, but they're-
I think he's getting, or gonna cut a check to them to pay them back.
Okay.
I think, I mean, we, he was working on it too, but we all three were working on going through all of them and-
That'd be tough, tough job, yeah.
Matching out what the bills were to-
How about going forward? Will he have a policy now going forward? Cause I think the issue was you didn't have a policy, right? You weren't covered by any of them?
Had something happened to him, they wouldn't-
Yeah, they wouldn't have a policy, yeah.
Right.
I think Josh has been talking to insurance and all that. Yeah, we've been working on it, but trying to fix everything and clearing everything up.
Great, great.
We have been working on it.
Stuff to walk into things that you didn't do and try to figure out what happened. I understand, yeah, appreciate that. Well, if it doesn't work out, let us know, cause we obviously wanted to be right, so I appreciate you coming in. Well, the scary part was that something happened to you and then the family finds out that you didn't have a policy.
Yeah.
That'd be the scary part, so um, go get it, go get it. Good people up there. It's just uh, sometimes you get in a message you didn't make and you gotta figure out what the heck's been going on, you know, so.
Understand it.
Yeah. Alright, anything else, anybody? Nothing for you either? Nope? Okay. John, appreciate you, thanks.
I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll second.
We're here.